No, I was not. Shortly afterwards, though. Yeah, Keith Johnson's the one that came up with the...
I have no idea.
Was it the original four?
It's not personal.
The devil in the turkey.
You had a busy day.
That's how I got here.
Now, I wasn't there. That's the story.
Church business.
Good morning. This time we'll call to order the Board of County Commissioners meeting for Thursday, April 19. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Klicka.
Here.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
And Chairman Ilert.
Here. All are present. We do have a quorum. Would you join with me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
For those who are present, if you have a noise-making device, would ask that you turn it to silent mode or off as to not interfere with electronic communications. We do have a couple of presentations to make this morning. We'll do so at this time. I'm going to ask Todd Rogers to join me at the podium this morning. Todd is Director of our Environmental Division of Public Health and Environment, and we have a proclamation this morning recognizing Earth Day. I understand that 48 years ago, this activity was initiated, and so we are in our 48th year of recognizing activities and the importance of preserving our environment by delivering this proclamation recognizing Earth Day. So Todd, I'll present this to you, and if you'd like to make any comments, welcome to do so.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. Happy Earth Day, everyone. It's actually Sunday, but that's okay. We'll go ahead and celebrate today. I want to start with a little history lesson because I believe that learning from our past helps us appreciate how far we've come. The first Earth Day, like Chairman Ilert said, was in 1970, and over 20 million people, Americans, participated in the activities and demonstrations on that day. There was an upswell of concern for stronger environmental protections. In a bipartisan effort led by President Nixon at the time, a historical landslide of congressional legislation was passed forming the EPA, the Clean Air Act, and the Clean Water Act. It's hard to believe that prior to 1970, factories could release polluting black smoke into the air, and manufacturers could dump toxic waste into the rivers, and there was no laws preventing it. But support from every walk of life in America valued a clean environment, and that's why we have the healthy and vibrant community that we have today. Today, Earth Day is a celebration of how far we've come and the great services that we offer here in Johnson County that makes us such a high-ranking place to live. Our parks offer outdoor recreation areas to enjoy with preserved areas for wildlife to flourish. Our wastewater treatment plants take pride in returning high-quality, safe, clean water back to our creeks. Our stormwater program not only works to prevent flooding, but it protects us against illegal discharges of harmful chemicals. The Department of Health and Environment provides a multitude of programs to protect our citizens. We monitor air pollution from businesses. We regulate septic systems to keep our groundwater clean. We offer safe disposal options for household hazardous waste amongst many other programs. I won't miss the opportunity to brag a little bit and say that we also just won an award from the EPA Region 7 for the work that we have done in our local schools. The Shawnee Mission School District Solid Waste Team has just finished up implementing a recycling and composting collection program in every single school in the district. We're very proud of that work. We're also working on a small grant to place recycling bins at every school stadium and sports complex in the district. Recycling and composting continues to be a top priority in the work that we do. Thank you for supporting all the work in this county that ensures a clean environment today and for future generations. Thank you, and have a happy Earth Day.
Well, Todd, thank you very much for sharing with us the many activities. Stay here, don't go too far. Sharing with us so many activities that citizens across our county participate in in taking steps to protect our environment. And I think it's next week, am I correct? We'll have some activities recognizing spatial activities that individuals have participated in and businesses.
Green business awards.
Green business awards, and so appreciate that effort. So, thank you very much, and thanks to all of our employees in the Environmental Division who assist us in making sure we're doing the right thing. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
And next, I'm going to ask Jesse Moffel to join me at the podium. Jesse works in our Home Services Housing Division of Human Services, and there are some, a couple of other people with him. I'll ask him to introduce those during his comment period. But we do have a proclamation recognizing and declaring April as Fair Housing Month in Johnson County. And over the years continuing today, Johnson County has always recognized the importance of identifying and participating in fair housing for all. We are not perfect like a lot of other folks, and we have housing demands that are short of being met, but we need to continue to work in those areas. And so, on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, I'm pleased to present this proclamation to you and in support of Fair Housing Month. Jesse, thank you very much. Do you like to make a comment and introduction? That would be fine.
Morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Jesse Moffel, Johnson County Housing Services, here today to speak briefly about fair housing. Firstly, I have David Ward and Debbie Collins here and other members of the Diversity and Equity Group as well as housing, if they'd like to be...
Yeah, if there are others here, come on up.
Oh, come on up.
Come on down. Nice try.
You can't sit on the back row.
Last Wednesday, April 11th commemorated the 50th anniversary of the Civil Rights Act of 1968. Title 8 of this legislation is known as the Fair Housing Act. The Fair Housing Act, as amended, prohibits discrimination in the sale, rental, and financing of housing based on race, color, religion, national origin, gender, disability, and familial status. HUD's Office of Fair Housing and Equal Opportunity exists to eliminate housing discrimination, promote economic opportunity, and achieve diverse, inclusive communities by leading the nation in the enforcement, administration, development, and public understanding of federal fair housing policies and laws. All Johnson County Housing Services programs are administered in accordance with these shared goals. As we interact with landlords, tenants, homeowners, contractors, and community, we are constantly mindful of our responsibilities and the rights of those we serve as defined by the Fair Housing Act. Thank you for this recognition and your ongoing support of the Fair Housing Act. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. You know, you stop and think, 1968, 1965, Civil Rights Act, it wasn't that many years ago where even in our community, there was a lot of discrimination in housing, and there were some visionary folks who stood up and helped our community move through that period and accept fair housing for all. So, thank you very much for your continued efforts in that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's anyone present who would like to address a commission on an item which does not later appear on the agenda, would welcome you to the podium, state your name and address, limit your comments to five minutes, and we'll be glad to receive that information. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard this morning? All right, if not, the public comment portion of our agenda is concluded. I do have a couple of notes for the record. I will be signing an administrative resolution number WD-18-020 enlarging the privately financed sewer district and provide for the assessment of all applicable fees, charges, and levies of the Consolidated Main Sewer District in the vicinity of 8331 Santa Fe Drive, and also administrative resolution number WD-18-021 enlarging the privately financed sewer district and provide for the assessments of all applicable fees, charges, and levies of Consolidated Main Sewer District in the vicinity of 156th Terrace and Quavira Road. That concludes notes for the record. Turning to the consent agenda, will the clerk please read the proposed consent agenda?
Item number one, consider approving the March 29, 2018 business session minutes. Commissioner Klicka was absent this day, so this item will need to be pulled from the consent agenda. Item number two, consider reappointing Dustin Calvin and Randy Hutchins as the sixth district representatives to the Southwest Consolidated Zoning Board through March 13, 2021. Item number three, consider authorizing the return of the Timber Wolf Estates Treatment Lagoon site to the former owners. Item number four, consider approving and transmitting the 10th Judicial District State Physical Year 2019 Juvenile Justice Comprehensive Plan Grant application to the Kansas Department of Corrections Juvenile Services Division for the renewal of grant funding in the amount of $1,632,691.81 and authorizing the associated contracts for graduated sanctions programs. Item number five, consider authorizing and submitting the Johnson County Department of Corrections State Physical Year 2019 Community Corrections Comprehensive Plan and funding request to the Kansas Department of Corrections as recommended by the Community Corrections Advisory Board in an amount not to exceed $2,349,967.38 and the use of the client reimbursements request in the amount of $891,209.85. And item number six, consider authorizing submission of a grant application requesting Continued Justice Reinvestment Initiative Community Corrections Behavioral Health Funds for the State Physical Year 2019 in the amount of $168,603 from the Kansas Department of Corrections.
Okay, thank you. So noted, item number one will be considered separately. Are there any other items a Commissioner would like to have considered separately? Is there anyone present who would like to have an item considered separately? If not, smack before the Commission. Mr. Osterhaus?
Move that we approve consent agenda items two through six as read.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the consent agenda as proposed with the exception of item number one. Any further questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for the March 29, 18 business session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the minutes as noted. Any further questions or comments? There being none, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Klicka.
Stand.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion passed. Are there any other... Moving to the action agenda, that's a short read. There are no action agenda items this morning, so we'll move to reports and communications. Ms. Postocak Ferguson.
Good morning. First item you have is a Siri report, April edition, so it gives you numbers through February. And unemployment remains low at 3% as of February 2018. Single-family homes sold year-to-date with just two months, 1,137, and that is the largest for that time period in the last five years. Again, that's two months. Same for the single-family building permits at 296 this time so far, and again, the higher point of the last five years of this same time period. And the report's attached if you have additional questions. Second item is the review of the Johnson County Fire District and... Thank you. Number two. And so, you have attached the executive summary. You may recall that you requested that we do this within 30 days. So, within a few business days of that directive, Commissioner Klicka, myself, Maury, and staff team, and I'll let Maury, who took the lead, give more details, met with the fire district and started the process. So, we did meet the 30 days, and we're reporting that out to you. Again, I asked Maury to take the lead, and I'll let him highlight the details as well as recognize the team that worked on this.
Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Penny and Chairman. Maury Thompson, Acting Deputy County Manager. As Penny indicated, you have the report and your information for the meeting this morning. A few brief comments I'd like to make on that, and then I believe the Chairman has a remark to make. But you may recall at your business session on March 15, you directed staff to conduct a review of Johnson County Fire District Number Two in regards to the district's short and long-term financial viability, stability of operations, and strength of service. You also directed an initial meeting to occur, which Penny referenced, and that did occur shortly after your action. My understanding of the action that you instructed staff to take, you emphasized your concern as to the long-term financial feasibility of the district and your desire to address and mitigate any future disruptions to that district. So, as a result of the review which has taken place, the initial meeting, and then follow-up work since that time, the report indicates a number of threats to the ongoing viability of the district. The report breaks down into three components, the introduction, then secondly is the threats to ongoing viability. I've noted a number of those. One is a transition to Kansas Police and Fire, KPF, from Capers for the district. What we're referring to is the Overland Park contract, and I'm going to pause on that one in particular. Down at the end of the third paragraph, you will know I referenced the attachment to the report, which is there, which lays out the finances of the district over the coming number of years, and that makes, takes into account the pending loss of the Overland Park contract, and as you can see, that has a very negative effect on the district. The reason I pause there and point that one out, there's a number of other items identified as threats, including their ambulance service and the city of Spring Hill and Miami County contracts. The financial projections made only take into account the loss of the Overland Park contract. So, point is, that's a very negative outlook for the district with the loss of that contract. These financial projections do not take into account any potential changes in those other items, so those would be future detriments to the district. Finally, section three of the report lays out some options. It starts with the options identified in the 2017 Cooperative Services Feasibility Study strategies, and I won't go through those again this morning, but would draw your attention to the final strategy identified in section three, which we've labeled Strategy F, again, not identified in the feasibility study, so I would encourage you to take a look at that one in particular, as that is new information. With that, I will pause, and before I turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman, I do want to take this opportunity to thank not only fire district staff, city of Overland Park staff for answering inquiries from me as well, but in particular to Johnson County staff, and there in particular to the Subcommittee of the County Auditor, Ken Cloughner, Ellen Wernicki, the Director of Emergency Management and Communications, and really most importantly to Tom Dugan and Budget Financial Planning for his work in providing me an initial draft from which to work with. So, thank you, Tom. Appreciate it. Mr. Chairman?
All right. Are there further questions by the Commission? Mr. Ashcraft?
Mr. Chairman, the Overland Park contract, is that imminent? Will that definitely happen? Is that the plan as far as you know?
As I recall, but perhaps Mr. Jarrett can speak to this more definitively, there was a, there was a financial contract put in place at the time of annexation, and perhaps, Mr. Jarrett, you can enlighten us on that.
At the time of the annexation, one of the big issues was the impact on the fire district, and so one of the requirements that we made as a part of that was that the city would compensate the fire district not just on the cost of service, but on the equivalency of the lost revenue. And so, that was the underlying agreement.
But that was a, for a specific period of time, so...
It was for a specific period of time, and there were other factors in there should facilities or equipment be acquired and how that was all to be managed, but there were other terms in there, and it was for a defined period of time. That's correct.
Okay.
So, just to, so I understand, Mr. Chairman, for whatever that period of time is, the city would compensate the district, but after that period of time, the...
The contract would end. The compensation would end. Okay, thank you.
And the property was detached from the fire district, so it's in the city and not subject to the fire district's levy.
Right, so they're going to be double taxed, as it were.
So, there is a loss of revenue.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If I may, to Commissioner Ashcraft's question, I direct you back to the Overland Park section of the report. The last paragraph on page two is a direct quote from the city manager and fire chief of Overland Park in my attempt to verify that that information was correct, so you might review that language as well. All right.
Yeah, I saw that, but being a quote and having it in writing, that is, I just want to, sometimes people's memories are not necessarily truly reflective of what was agreed to, so... But thank you, thank you.
Moving forward, I would ask the Law Department to review this report and be prepared next week to address legal issues that might be involved in an executive session before this board, and so that would, that will be the next step. Mr. Klicka?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to express my appreciation to the staff for going through this review here, and I know it's been kind of a tough issue when we've got other issues at play here with the district, and also Don, your assistance through the process here. To the Commissioners, I appreciate your help on this issue, and as we move this process through in trying to come to some type of conclusion on what direction to take, I appreciate any thoughts, comments, whatever. The longer we stretch this out, it's providing a lot of uncertainty within that district through the board and through the, through the employees as far as what needs to be done. So, I know you all have been very conscious of what's going on here, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate the support you're all providing on this.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Ash, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I have some questions about the options presented. I can deal, I can talk to staff about that offline. I didn't know if we were going to have a discussion about that or not.
Well, that's up to you. My suggestion would be that, that, you know, asking those questions to the staff or to the Legal Department, that's fine, but my suggestion is that we let the Legal Department review these items, and then we'll have a, I anticipate, an executive session next week to go through them.
Because they may find some of these just aren't legally feasible, and... Okay, that's fine, that's fine. Maybe Mr. Thompson could educate me a little bit on it, because there are some things, some options that weren't considered, and I was trying to understand what the thought process was.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Chairman, I do have one more item that's not on your packet, but last night at the Joint Parks Board meeting, Mr. Klicka asked about the Arts and Heritage Center voting, and so Ronnie Metzger did give me that information. I thought I'd share that so that you all have benefited that information. If you look at the last two elections, well, the general and primary for '16 and '17, all those totaled for advanced voting, we had a total of 164,000, and so Election Office had 38,586 of those. Arts and Heritage Center had 35,225 of those. Hilltop, 34,046. Northeast Office is 24,002, or 523, and the others tapered down quite a bit after that, but just wanted to share with you, you had asked specifically about where is Arts and Heritage in that mix. According to Ronnie, he fully expects it to probably exceed the Election Office eventually after a few years, so just wanted to report that back.
Manager, I appreciate you bringing that up, and for those that are wondering, we did have a joint Parks and Board meeting yesterday, and one of the presentations was the status or what's going on relative to Arts and Heritage, especially after being an operation that's going to be close to a year here in June. And I will tell you, I think we did the right thing here by how we repositioned this thing and with the museum, with the parks, with the, with the elections, and with the theater. The number of footprints going into that building far exceeded what I think was the initial thoughts on there, and I realize we could say how many of the same people have been in and out, but when you have what, it's probably close to 200,000 pairs of feet that have gone in there through the last year for one reason or another, it seems like it's turned into a very, very valuable resource to this county and to the staff, and I've extended this to the parks. Really appreciate all the efforts that went into it.
Thank you. Chairman, that's it for my report.
All right. We do not have a legislative update this morning as they're on short timeout before they go back for the veto session, so we will turn to Commission comments. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Chairman. As has just been stated, had our joint meeting with Parks last night. It's always good to be back there, having served on Parks Board as a Parks Board Commissioner for several years. It's always good to be back with a lot of familiar faces. They're doing great stuff. They work really hard, and they do a nice job, and they're award-winning, and it shows. It's proof. You can walk in, you can feel it, and you can see it. And tomorrow, speaking of parks, reminder about the, I'm sorry, Saturday groundbreaking for the, at Antioch Park for the new improved playground equipment in the new Village, West Village, so that's all.
Mr. Osterhaus?
I'll echo those comments about the Parks Board. It was nice to have an update from them. It was actually my second update on parks for the day because our leadership group had Leadership OP met with all the other leadership groups from around the county and had our joint county day. So, while some of it was repetitive, some of it was new for me, and so I'm thankful for Penny and the Chairman who came and spoke, and many of our other departments, libraries, parks, airports, and then a tour of JCDS. It was very eye-opening for a lot of citizens who didn't quite know exactly everything the county did, and they were surprised to learn there were 27 different departments that they could potentially interact... that they could potentially interact with. Some of our emerging artists sold some artwork after our tour. A couple of the members were motivated to buy some of that, so some good news all the way around there. I did want to mention, last week, we celebrated our volunteers, and I forgot two of our volunteers that come to our meeting every week, Ed and Lenore, they come and observe for the League of Women Voters, but they are also library volunteers, and so I wanted to thank them for their service to our libraries, and I forgot to do that last week. So my apologies, but thank you for your service.
Thank you. Mr. Allen?
Thank you. Tuesday morning, I was at the Mark Building for a transit meeting, and I brought up, I don't know if we're aware, that on the Missouri side of I-435 at State Line, they're in the process of widening I-435 to five lanes in each direction. And there are some KDOT officials there, and I asked, are you aware of this project and the impact, frankly, that would have coming eastbound in the morning, that transition at State Line when they cross into Kansas into Johnson County? What impact is that going to have on traffic? So I don't even think they, frankly, were aware of it. But again, I have a concern, how that's going to transition. That intersection averages about 150,000 cars a day. The Missouri Transit, people say it's the busiest stretch of car traffic in a metropolitan area. So how is that traffic going to transition eastbound on I-435 when it hits State Line? Is there going to be another backup there? And frankly, in the morning, that'd be a lot of employees trying to come to jobs in Johnson County. Later that day, I attended a Kansas City Transit Board meeting, and I was on I-35 at approximately 4:10 in the afternoon. And coming back already to go on I-635, I-35 interchange, it was already backed up. 75th Street was backed up already to Johnson Drive. I didn't go down south to Gardner and see the other one. Then I brought up the other interchange problem that we have at I-435 and I-35. My point is, I think we're getting to a tipping point on these different traffic jams and potential areas in the county. And in my opinion, we need to take maybe a much more aggressive step. This county continues to grow, averaging 7,000, 8,000 residents. We've created more jobs by far than any county in the state. You know, if we're going to continue to be an economic engine, this traffic needs to be addressed in a systematic manner. So I have a big concern about it. I just think that if it's difficult and the time that's wasted sitting in this traffic, eventually it's, it's going to come back and be a more major problem. So I know we have a new governor. I think we need to maybe make a, hopefully, a little bit stronger case on that, but I just see the potential. I'm sorry, I haven't seen the engineering on that intersection, but I'm afraid that's going to be another, another backup for us, probably. So I surprise Missouri, frankly, had the money to widen it to five lanes. I think their transit's in worse shape than we are. But anyway, I keep my eye on transit ideas, but to me, I just see another problem out there, and they're not getting any better.
And that problem is coming sooner than later, because it's underway.
Yeah, it's under construction.
They're clearing. They're going.
So, well, thank you for that reminder. I'm supposed to attend a meeting out at the stadiums this evening. I should avoid 435 and pick an alternative route. All right. Thank you. Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I have two items. The first is a rather solemn item. Mr. Chairman, there was a young man named Gabriel Bruce, who if, he had not been dropped off at daycare 23 years ago, he'd be 23 today. My family, Mr. Chairman, are from Oklahoma, and we were in Oklahoma City 23 years, 23 years ago today. And it still weighs on me, and I just wanted to recognize the families that were impacted, the 168 victims that lost their lives to the worst domestic terrorism in this nation's history, and remember them for this moment, for those of us that were there that felt the blast. It's something that stays with us. So I offer that just as a moment of reflection. The second thing is really a recognition of heroism. Mr. Chairman, you probably saw in the news, the Southwest pilot who happened to graduate from Mid-American Nazarene University, Tammy Jill Schultz. She got a degree, her degrees in biology and agribusiness, and then went on to become a decorated, renowned pilot. It's funny how she probably was going to be a farmer or horticulturist or something, but went on to become a Navy pilot, one of the first women pilots in service, and was on this flight that, it had some tragedy, but through her cool, calm demeanor and her abilities, saved, I believe, 149 people. So while there are tragedies on this date, this is also a date to reflect on heroism and good service and good graces. So Tammy Jill Schultz, I do not know you, but you, you were a graduate from Mid-American Nazarene. I think Olafah can call you one of ours. Johnson County definitely should call you one of ours. So thank you for your service, and you're an inspiration to all of us.
Thank you. Mr. Clicka?
Mr. Chairman, I think the other commissioners noted my comments here, especially with Parks, and I do want to acknowledge as far as Commissioner Ashcraft's response or comments relative to Oklahoma City. Many of you know I have a very close tie to Oklahoma City, and actually had left there a couple months before the bombing occurred. And my, one of my younger brothers is a police officer there, and he was the first responder to that, and the impacts that that had had on him were incredible. And that, there was a tough time, but thank you for making those comments.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Schaefer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two items. Tuesday was a busy day for both the chair and myself. At lunch, we had a chance to attend the Westwood, annual Westwood Business Luncheon at 1900 State Line. Very nice function. Steve Carbank and his crew are doing a nice job as they move to Johnson County to do their projects here in the upcoming future. As well, that afternoon, I'll put my plug in, the K-State-Johnson County Extension Volunteers had a meeting, and a welcome, welcome event at Tuesday afternoon, and Chair, Chair was there as well, myself. So, and I actually tested my soil. Well, we'll get a report back in three weeks. Okay? We'll see what happens. Thank you.
Are you going to have to move? Is that...
Probably have to move. Yeah, there we go. So it was, it was nice. Nice event. Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you. I have one item which I'm going to ask action on from this body. The Subcommittee for Evaluating the Search Firms completed its work, and a couple of items. Number one was determined that the process would require at least 15 to 16 weeks to complete, which means over the next couple of months, with all the budget activity and other issues that this body has to consider, the suggestion is that we defer a decision in regards to search activities until July 12, which will basically complete our budget process and other issues we have to deal with. So I would like a motion to affirm that. Mr. Clicka?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we defer action relative to the selection process until July 12.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to affirm that recommendation. Any further questions or comments? All right, there being none, clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Clicka?
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Chairman Ilert?
Aye.
Motion carried. A couple of other items, I had the opportunity to attend the 25th anniversary of Heart-to-Heart International this past weekend, and a local, I should say this, it demonstrated the power of an idea put into practice. And this was an idea that was generated by the Olafah Rotary Club, the Noon Club, 25 years ago, in making a trip to Russia in connection with the Chernobyl incident and providing assistance. And since that time, it's grown to be a completely worldwide relief effort and one of the major relief programs affecting not only the United States, but other countries around the world. So Dr. Gary Morse and those who brought this idea to completion and continue to support this effort, congratulations. We have a study session to begin. At 11:00 a.m. today, we will receive the community survey report from ETC. That will occur in room 202, 204. The press and public are always invited. And then following lunch, we will have at 1:00 p.m., again, a study session receiving the Stormwater Strategic Plan update. And again, that will occur 202, 204 at 1:00 p.m. We also have been invited to attend a preview of the, a mock-up, I would say that, of some of the facilities in the proposed new courthouse. And that's at 2:30 p.m. And what is that address, Mr. Waters? Do you have that handy?
I do. I will pull up the map here. This is a mock-up of the courtrooms, and the key with these courtrooms is, and you literally construct each of these standard courtrooms that we will be building, and have the participants in the courtroom come sit in there. Sit in the jury box, sit at the, stand at the podium, sit on the bench, so that the lines of sight and everything is right before you go build them. So that, that activity's been going on this week. The address is 15325 West 100th Terrace. That is just west of Lackman and north of 435.
Go to the stop line where the service station is, and then go west. Yes.
Quick trip.
Quick trip. Right. Right. So anyway, if, if any, I'm not sure what everybody's schedule is this afternoon, but if you're available, I think it might be of interest. We do have a request for an executive session, so would receive a motion. Why don't we do that at about 10:20, 10:30?
I've moved that the Board recess its open meeting and convene an executive session at approximately 10:30 a.m. for a period of 15 minutes, for the purpose of receiving the advice of counsel and to preserve attorney-client privilege, and to reconvene an open session in this room at approximately 10:45 a.m. or as soon thereafter as the executive session may end.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded. So approve the request for the executive session. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Commissioner Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Clicka?
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert?
Aye.
Motion carried. That concludes our agenda. We are in recess. We'll take a short break and come back for agenda review. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hilltop is, look at...
Those two, yeah. I remember, you made that. I remember when two were...
That's my baby. Yeah. Can you believe that's become the second largest? I mean, I take that, because that goes on forever. That's a long...
But these two are just starting, so they, they both come.
But take a look at how many totally, if you add the Northeast Office, look at how many totally people are voting in those.
Making a difference. And it cuts down on those that do at the regular voting. Yeah. So we're starting to...
And then 15 to 16. Resolidate these.
The record will reflect that at approximately 10:45 a.m., we reconvene from executive session. No action is required, so we are adjourned. Have a nice, warm weekend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Where are we meeting downstairs?